I'd like to open the Monday, December 9, 2013, regular meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. And as is our custom at the beginning, we reserve a few minutes for public comment. The public may comment on any matter except items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record is already closed. Generally, the time limit for public comment is three minutes. And looking into the audience, does anyone wish to speak regarding any item that is not scheduled for public hearing or for which the public hearing has not been closed? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to Item 2, which is our deliberations on the appeal of the hearings official decision for Oakley Meadows Cohousing, DDT 13-1. And I think we had talked earlier about maybe starting with a question as far as admissibility of the hearings official on some of the timing of the record and that. And I think we were going to maybe have Ann start with that.
So I can just basically summarize what I saw in the hearings officer's order and decision. It looked to me, I wasn't at the hearing, it looked to me like what happened at the end of the hearings officer hearing is he left the record open for seven days for new evidence argument from both sides. And then an extra seven days after that to respond to any new evidence that came in on the ninth date. The first date was the ninth. There was an objection to something that came in on the sixteenth, I think the sixteenth, asking for the record to be reopened to give an opportunity to respond to evidence that came in on the sixteenth. So there was some back and forth about whether that was appropriate. The hearings official determined that there may have been, I think he'd cited that there may have been something that knew that came in on the ninth that allowed the applicant to then submit something, some evidence in response on the sixteenth. And that that then didn't, there was no opportunity to respond again to that new evidence. And so he issued an order saying that. And then in his final decision, he also kind of reiterated that ruling. And then commented that to the extent that he was relying on any of that evidence, he was going to point it out in his decision. And he did that in at least one instance where he said, this is evidence that came in from the applicant on the sixteenth, and noting that he was relying on that. So that was his ruling. If you're asking for my opinion on whether that was appropriate, I think that it was. There are Luba decisions that say during that open record period, the first seven-day open record period, new evidence can come in. And then parties actually have an opportunity to submit new evidence in response to that evidence on the second seven-day period. There's discussion in some Luba decisions that say you can't continue to go back and forth forever and ever asking for the record to be reopened. So there has to be an ending to it. So even if that was considered new evidence that came in on the sixteenth, then it was valid because it was in response to evidence that the opponents had put in on the ninth. One other issue that the hearings officer commented on was that the timing was short and that there really wasn't time for him to continue to leave the record open because of the 120 day. And that did play into his decision a little bit, although I don't think he needed to rely on that in order to make his ruling.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from commissioners regarding that? Okay. What I'm thinking is that today, as we deliberate, since there are only four of us, and we do have next Monday also for the final deliberations and decisions, I'd like to not take actual votes today. I'd like to maybe do polling rather than actual voting. And then do our actual voting next week when we have more of us here. I think that would be a better route to go. Any questions regarding that procedure? Commissioner Duncan.
Is it intended that Commissioner Mills and Baker will be involved then at that point?
I believe that's the case. I know Commissioner Mills will be back. I don't remember about Commissioner Baker.
Commissioner Baker indicated he would not be here as well.
Not be here.
But Mills would be.
Thank you. All right. Well, shall we get started? What I think I'd like to do is maybe just do a go around and just see what our general sense is on what we're feeling as far as looking through the record and the testimony and the statements. And I'll entertain anyone starting. Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, I did provide some of these things in an email last night. Basically, as far as the hearings official's decision, I'm sort of neutral now because I, in that decision, there was a lot of conditions. So I need some clarification on some of those conditions. If you can approve of the hearings official's decision, let's say to approve the application, but modify the conditions that he has done, whether that constituted a nonapproval or what. And I also had some, is that all you wanted, Chair?
No, go ahead.
And then I did have.
You want to respond?
Sure. Okay.
Yeah, the Planning Commission's reviewing the hearings officer's decision, but it is authorized to modify. So if it decides it wants to change or tweak some of those conditions, that would be considering the modification of the decision.
And in addition to, I think as the Chair has outlined, we'll be talking of the several issues that impact the transportation impact question. I did have and would like at another time to have some things further explained to me which deal with setbacks, screening, easements, and the Lot 200 issue further clarified.
Okay. Commissioner Duncan.
I guess a question, would it be, before we get into the assignment of errors, would it be better to have answers like that? Because some of the questions that Commissioner Jaworski may have actually deal with several of the assignment of errors.
Okay.
It just seems that clarity would be helpful early than later.
Okay. Becky?
I've prepared a presentation to go over some key items in the record that might answer some of these questions.
Okay. How about maybe, let's go ahead and do the go around, and then maybe we'll give it to Becky to go over some of those items. And then we'll go from there. I think I'll go ahead and jump in. I think I'm leaning toward agreeing with the hearings official's decision. I think I'm relatively comfortable with the transportation issues and the way we've done things. I do have a couple of questions regarding that. I think there may be, as Commissioner Jaworski indicated, some modifications to some of the compatibility issues that I think I might entertain. But I think overall, I didn't see anything that, in my mind, was a fatal flaw in the decision. So that's the way I'm leaning.
Excuse me. Well, for me, I guess in reading through the appeal, a lot of it is, on me, kind of goes to the second assignment of error and how the transportation thing goes. Because that's referred to back in a lot of the other assignments of error. And it gets down to the, you know, the width of the street, the safety of the streets, and all of those. So I think I'll be, before I make a judgment of whether, you know, where I'm landing on that, I'm going to want to hear a little bit more information on, from staff and from other commissioners, how they feel on the interpretations of that. But to me, that's kind of the key. That, to me, that's kind of the linchpin. The other ones, to me, are secondary and can probably be, you know, if there are some changes with setbacks and stuff like that, I think we can work through those. But the main error, I think, is number two and whether or not, how that plays out, I haven't made a decision yet.
Commissioner Duncan.
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Randall. I'm generally in agreement with the hearings officer's decisions. I thought that they were well-written, well-supported. There are some elements in here that I think I want legal staff to comment on. One of them is under assignment error, too, when it talks about the constitutional standards for extraction, and just that idea of, I think I have a little hard time thinking that the Planning Commission should be making those decisions without a lot of legal discussion and legal advice. And so I think I'd like to have a little bit more class on what that is and how we deal with that.
Okay.
Excuse me, exaction.
Extraction.
Okay. Well, I think maybe now let's, Becky, if you have a presentation, then, I have mine. The way I approached it was I took each assignment of error and subassignment, and then I just made my own notes and my own thoughts. So that'll be what I'm following along on, but.
This actually doesn't follow the assignments of error. I just wanted to give some, just a foundation of the site, the site plan, the landscape plan.
Okay.
How things changed, how that affects the right-of-way dedication, just some key facts.
Okay. Do you have that copy of the original site plan that was shown at the neighborhood meeting and what that really looks like?
I do.
I know that was one of my questions and based on what it was scanned like.
It's not scanned now.
Is that this one?
No.
Okay.
At the neighborhood meeting.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's much clearer than, so, yeah, can we just pass that around?
Thank you.
Because I know that was one of the issues or questions that I had originally, is it looked like there were just no buildings shown. So they just didn't scan well. We'll pass this around.
So this is a vicinity map of the property. It's in the record. The record is noted in parentheses on all of these slides. And if anyone wants a hard copy, I did pass around copies.
It looks like you've labeled those like PH 1-8.
Yes.
For where it is in the record.
Exactly.
Good. Thank you.
So it's maybe difficult to see, but from this image, you can see that Oakley Lane is an unapproved roadway that just stops short of the subject property. I don't have my pointer, but the property is to this, maybe I should just, I'll do a Vana White view. So here's the subject property. And Oakley Lane just turns at the half-point of the property. The property continues to here. This is city parkland, resource area in the river. There's some existing buildings here. This is McClure Lane, which also just dead ends. And River Road is further this way. There's some undeveloped lots here, development, development. And this is tax lot 200, the subject of the street connectivity study.
While you're there.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Jaworski, then Commissioner Duncan.
One of the things, not that it's that critical, but when I looked at that, I assumed that what you said, the subject property also includes that rectangle to the left of it.
It does.
Yes.
I'm sorry, it doesn't outline correctly.
But the bottom, the southern end of that, never aligns with all the site plans that I saw.
Yes.
And I never saw an overlay of the site plan on that kind of map to show what is the lands they're not using. It got confusing for me.
I apologize for that. There was a property line adjustment that was submitted, reviewed, and approved before. They submitted for PUD, and it takes a while for the assessor to update their records and not sort of get their tax lot data. But the site plan is correct in terms of the development site. So this line moved up a little bit, that line moved down a little bit. And the adjustment is not in the record. So I'm a little bit nervous about going too far on this, but the site plan is accurate.
Okay. Thank you.
The site plan we have is accurate.
Yes.
Commissioner Duncan.
I can't ask my question.
Because it, okay? All right.
So I'm supposed to be talking into the microphone, so I won't be jumping up anywhere.
You have, you can take one with you.
Can you just use the little pointer?
I know. Where's my pointer?
Is there one on the?
Oh.
Pursor, and then that little arrow.
Ah.
There you go.
Here we go. Okay. Lane County referral comments. So this was a question that came up, is Lane County's involvement. And Lane County's indicated that adjacent to the property, it's a City of Eugene Street, and then west of that, it's a Lane County roadway. And I.
One more time, please.
Abutting the site, it's in City of Eugene. And then to the west, it's outside of city limits, so.
To River Road.
In the urban growth boundary. Yes.
So the only property on that, on Oakley Lane that's been annexed is this one?
I don't have a city limits map in the record to be precise on that boundary, but generally speaking, yes. So I have copies of the Lane County referral comments. They're in the record as PH 52. And they indicate that Oakley Lane has a paved surface between 18 and 20 feet. And I'll circulate that.
Is that just their email to you?
Yes. Their referral comments in email form.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I have a copy of that when I read that. Did I read that correctly to indicate that when they stated in that, those comments is that they have no intention to maintain that road?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And our Public Works referral comments, PH 30, indicate that Oakley Lane has 20 feet of right-of-way along the subject property. And if anyone needs a copy of the Public Works referral.
Which was that last PH?
30.
PH 30.
Thank you.
The street connectivity study, so this was submitted by the applicant's engineer, and its record number PH 63. And I've got, this just shows the diagram attached to the study, but I'm circulating the full study. And this shows tax lot 200, that's that vacant property to the north. And so in a street connectivity exception, we're looking to see how much right-of-way we need, how much street extensions we need. And the applicant is showing that with the existing 20 feet of right-of-way, if they just dedicated an additional five feet, that they would give tax lot 200 25 feet. And that's the minimum width to develop the property under a flag lot configuration. And that's in an appeal issue. The hearings official ruled that that's all that's required. And the appeal goes into concerns about restricting the potential development of that property. And then just broader street connectivity that, yes.
I had a hard time because the maps that I looked at said tax lot 200, and I couldn't equate that with how Lot 432, has this been subdivided, is what you're saying?
No. This is, this is the applicant's conceptual plan about showing how 200 could be further developed with just five feet of right-of-way dedication from the PUD. So you have to imagine an overlay, and it's not entirely clear.
Okay. Well, this is where, and I don't want to get into what Commissioner Duncan had alluded to under exaction or whatever. But the point that I didn't understand is when you do a connectivity study, you can sort of indicate how that development can occur. But if the developer doesn't want to develop it that way, which is like our applicant is doing, how does that suffice? I didn't understand that. Because if I owned that piece of property, I would say, well, I want to develop different. I need my entrance to be here. And it doesn't work. So how does that work out? Because could tax lot 200 have hired an engineer to do a connectivity study and said that the applicant should do it differently? That's what I didn't understand, is the relationship of the two. That's a question.
There isn't a lot of guidance in the code about the requirements for a street connectivity study, but the hearings official's decision said it was good enough. So that'll be something that you'll guys, you'll guys will want to talk about as part of the appeal issue.
I'll jump in here and just add that I believe what the standard requires for the street connectivity exception is, and I'm paraphrasing here from the code, but that the applicant has the burden of showing how adjoining undeveloped or partially developed properties can be, quote, adequately served. And so in this case, the applicant provided that information from their traffic engineer. And really, it's, I mean, we use phrases like shadow plat, or, you know, in a sense, I think you should understand that it's a conceptual showing of how that property could be developed. And I think Commissioner Jaworski is correct that it doesn't have, you know, the authority of conditions or establishing that that is the required way in which that property should develop in the future. And so it's a theoretical analysis to show how this applicant should be allowed an exception to continuing the street.
The right-of-way dedications that Public Works recommended and the hearings official affirmed, the area in red is a requirement for 22 and 1/2 feet of right-of-way, and that's half of 45, because 45 is the minimum for a low-volume residential street. And we'll talk about street classification a little bit later, but based on Public Works' assumption that it's a low-volume residential, they wanted a minimum half-width right-of-way for the area in red, which coincides with the site access driveway. And then the area in blue is a 13-foot-wide right-of-way dedication for the future Hammerhead. So this roughly corresponds with the applicant's street connectivity study, but Public Works wanted a little bit more right-of-way for the cul-de-sac or the Hammerhead to also have a sidewalk on the south side. And then the area of pink is to continue the sidewalk or accessway 13-foot wide for a continuous connection along the north property line to the city parkland. And they did not, the hearings official did not require improvement of any of those rights-of-way. The condition was for an irrevocable petition for future improvements.
Okay, I've got a question that I think Commissioner, go ahead, Commissioner Duncan, and then I'll.
Could you tell me, is there a city standard for the size of a Hammerhead? I think I can ask that.
Yes.
Because it's not in the record anywhere. It just talks about it.
It's not in the record, but yes, it's part of our adopted street standards, specifications on turnarounds, cul-de-sacs, and Hammerheads.
Can you give me an idea of how big that is? Is there a width and a length? Because to me, a Hammerhead would be, for lack of a better term, a T.
Maybe we should go back to that. Street connectivity shows, shows a T-type of Hammerhead, and Public Works generally agreed with that, but wanted more right-of-way for a sidewalk on the south side. So that's showing a 75-foot length by 20 feet, 20 by 75.
So you're saying that the Hammerhead is laying sideways. It runs out, backs up, and then turns that way. So that would have to be a public, under this connectivity plan, that would have to be dedicated public right-of-way?
My understanding, and Becky can jump in here and clarify, but is that the proposed Hammerhead would be within the area of dedicated right-of-way, that the applicant also provided, at least in the interim until those future improvements occur, that they provided an emergency turnaround on the site.
Right.
That would also meet the fire department's dimensional requirements.
But again, in this Hammerhead, it would appear that tax lot 200 absorbs most of that area?
That's true. Most of it's on tax lot 200. And apparently, that's just following the alignment of the street. It's the only conclusion I have from the record.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
And then the question that I had is, the five feet that's noted here, is that coming off the applicant's property?
Yes.
And then Public Works wanted an additional up to, it's 13 feet.
So it's a total of 13, right.
Total of 13 feet, all off the applicant's property.
Yes.
For that part. Okay. Commissioner.
If you could go back to the prior slide? I guess my question is, when I look at this property on the northern route, why didn't they just extend the road to the end of the subject property, put the Hammerhead in there and require them to do sidewalks to the end of their property?
That.
Now, instead of something that might occur.
So that's something you could talk about when you get to that appeal issue about modifying the decision?
Well, I was under the impression, based on what has happened elsewhere in the city, that the developer is required to put in sidewalks adjacent to their property. And I'm wondering why it was not enforced here.
In this case, I believe the Public Works referral comments describe how their analysis agrees with the applicant's request. The applicant has requested an exception to not continue the street. So in evaluating that, you know, Public Works Department ultimately agreed in granting the exception, so did the hearings official. And so that really is where I believe the decision stems from in terms of not continuing the sidewalk along the full frontage of the subject property. I believe Becky's correct that that's part of what the Planning Commission's role will be here on appeal, is determining whether the hearings official correctly agreed with that exception. And back to your earlier point about potentially modifying conditions, that's certainly within the realm of what the Planning Commission could look at in terms of resolving the appeal. If you, for example, determine that he erred in granting the exception or in not requiring additional right-of-way, that's something that we'd need to discuss further as far as how you would address it in a final order.
And then just one more question that I have on the, on this site plan here, where it shows the 22-foot-six special setback all the way along the applicant's property. That doesn't seem to line up with what is actually in.
Yeah.
These dedications, so.
I've got, I was trying to find that map in my presentation, but the information on the maps is not entirely consistent, which is why I wanted to present the information so that you didn't have to search and try to figure out what was what.
And, well, I guess my question with that is, is the site plan that the applicant did shows a 22-foot-six special setback.
Right.
And then that line runs continuously to the east with no jogs at all.
Yeah.
The right-of-way dedications that are noted here are different, and they've requested special setbacks related on that 22-foot-six special setback here that may or may not correlate with what's actually being requested.
That's correct.
And I guess that's, I'm a little confused on that.
So the applicant's site plan is what they proposed. They proposed a special setback instead of right-of-way dedication.
Okay.
Their study showed they only needed to dedicate five feet to enable tax lot 200 to develop. And the city and the hearings officials determined the right-of-way requirements.
Which is this.
Yes.
Here.
And the applicant did show the right-of-way dedication on a site plan that I have in my presentation, and it's in the record.
Okay.
To show how it fits into this.
So there is a site plan in the record that shows the actual.
Do you want me to jump, do you want me to jump to that right now?
That would help me, yeah.
So this is PT 18, the applicant's updated site plan, and it shows right-of-way dedications as required along the north line. And then also shows everything inset along the west property line by feet. Those were two conditions that clearly affected how this site may look, and so the applicant turned that in to show that they could meet those conditions of approval without creating a domino effect internally.
Thank you.
I have, I have colored copies of that. Just to quickly show, so the city didn't recommend improvement of that accessway along the north property line. They didn't have plans through the park for a path in that alignment or funding. And the Public Works comments talk about there being an existing bike path connection to the north at East Hilliard Lane, and a planned one in the. in the, in the city's master plan for a bike-ped connection to the south at McClure Lane. This is an excerpt of the Arterial and Collector Street Plan. There's been a lot of discussion about ADT, average daily traffic, and paving widths, and the difference between an access lane and a low volume. So, you can see, an access lane right-of-way is between 40 and 55 feet. The 40-foot right-of-way means you could have 21 feet of paving with parking on one side, setback sidewalks, and that it carries less than 250 ADT. And so, the appellants are saying that that's what the street is functioning as now, based on ADT as an access lane. Lane County's called it a local access road. And I just note that their terminology is different from our terminology in terms of an ax, local access road versus an access lane in a low-volume residential, just to add more confusion there. Low-volume residential is between 45 and 55 feet, has different pavement widths for different parking scenarios, and its design capacity for ADT is between 250 and 750. And so, that's a central argument, is that the development is elevating the street classification from an access lane to a low-volume residential. Public Works and the hearings official have said the street will function as a low-volume residential. And so, that was the basis for the right-of-way dedication. The 22 and 1/2 feet is half of the minimum, 45.
Public Works terminology on classifications, when they say "will function," does not that mean when it's built and designed to that, but that it may not function like that now if left in its current state?
I'm hesitating because I don't know if that clarification is in the record, but my sense is that you're correct. The street has not been designed.
Right. So, I don't see the relevance. It's talking, that's, okay, never mind.
So, that was, this is the applicant's initial site plan, and it shows buildings set back from the north line, and buildings against the west property line, and buildings pretty close to the south property line. On the east property line, the buildings are set back more, and there's some dashed lines along the east property line. That indicates a public wastewater easement. The staff recommended deducting the easement area in determining net density. The hearings official said that that wasn't necessary to deduct easements if it was, if the infrastructure was underground. The appellant is saying that the internal Hammerhead turnaround, so here's the site access. There is some surface parking, shared driveway, continues all the way down to here, and then some garages. And then, here's a turnaround. And there is a condition of approval that there be a temporary easement over this turnaround in this part of the driveway so that emergency vehicles can enter the site and turn around. The applicant requested a modification to the five-foot setback for structures because they wanted to have the garages right on the property line. The condition was for obtaining an easement for maintenance access and for firewall separation. And if the applicant couldn't obtain the easement, then everything needed to be inset. We heard from the, those property owners that they weren't interested in encumbering their property in that manner, and so, that updated site plan that you just saw shows everything inset five feet. On the south line, there are some structures that are also less than the required five-foot setback, and then, the concrete wall extends along the vehicle use area there. So, it's the same condition, get an easement or inset everything. And we did hear from those property owners that they're in support of the PUD. We don't know whether they want to grant an easement or not, and so, that'll be something that, that condition, the either-or is still in place.
That's from those adjacent property owners at the south?
The property owners to the south.
On the sewer line easement in regards to density, you said staff said it should be considered, and hearings official went against that. If it were considered not part of the property for density things, would the property exceed the density maximum?
No.
And just to point out, I believe we included that analysis in the staff report that went to the hearings official. So, if you're looking for that, we made findings on that in terms of documenting the area of each easement, what the effect would be on the net density. Hearings official ultimately disagreed on exactly which pieces of ground to exclude under that, but the calculations are there if you want to look for.
And it didn't met, it still met the requirements, with or without the easement.
That's what we found.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, I had a similar question because the fact that you considered it, you know, public easements. You seemed to also allude to that you were waiting for what EWEB would do with this, with its easements. Historically, have you considered, I would assume, wastewater to be public easements? Would you historically have considered EWEB to be public easements?
It's situational. And again, I want to be careful not going outside the record, but in some cases...
I read it in the record.
Yeah. In some cases, an EWEB facility is located within a quote "public utility easement," which is an easement in a broader sense for any number of utilities. In other cases, it's specific to EWEB's facilities as opposed to a broader set of public improvements. So, it depends.
And my question, which was also, when you were talking of setbacks on that east side, that double line that goes up, is that the setback, or what is that double line?
The white area is the easement, and the other line...
Yeah, what is this easement line?
The applicant...
Soft swale.
Soft swale and sewer easement.
Deep water off. It says on this thing here.
Okay.
Can you read it better on this one?
And since you also mentioned setbacks, I, in the record, it's not on that one, but in the record, it showed the west side where they moved it back five feet by the garages. Am I, were you referring to the south side in the record where it stated that there was an input that some of the buildings were less than a foot or so back? Is that referring to these buildings like six or such are on the south side?
Yes. So, the substandard setbacks are along the west line and the south line. The applicant requested a modification, which is allowable under the PUD if you show that you meet the PUD purpose statements. The applicant's relying on clustering and other purpose statements to request the modification. And the hearings official said that would be okay if you can get an easement from the adjacent property owners for maintenance access and fire separation.
Okay. And does the development on the north side meet all the setbacks?
No.
I was unclear when I read that.
And that's right. So, that's a function of the right-of-way dedication. So, the applicant's map that shows the right-of-way, okay, wait, let me see. I want to show. So, there's a detail of the north property line originally showing some pretty good setbacks. Let's see, it says 36 feet, 28, 26, 12, looks like the closest dimension. But then, remember, the city required a bunch of right-of-way along that north line. And so, there is also a question about the landscape plan, so I will...
Well, could you tell me now how far back they are?
I believe it's about a foot from the dedicate, or the area that would be required as right-of-way, so...
But that right-of-way will be built out, is that, at some point in time?
Right.
So, they'd be within one foot of something?
Correct.
The right-of-way line is that special setback. Is it, or is the bike pad also just, does that end up being a special setback?
This site plan, the updated site plan, I think best reflects what the result is on the right-of-way dedication and the building placement. The right-of-way actually would have encumbered part of a proposed building, and there was a condition that the building be moved at least outside of the right-of-way. But there wasn't a condition that they be set back five feet or 10 feet in compliance with the setback standards.
There wasn't a condition that said that? Why didn't code say that? I thought code said that from that, it has to be set back five.
So, that's a modifiable standard through the PUD purpose statements, and the applicant requested a modification to setbacks, building setbacks in general, for clustering purposes. And they generally said to have a greater setback from the east property line, where there's the city park and the river, that it forced everything out to the other edges. And they requested a modification to the setback.
I'll just add here, I think it's fair to say that that's an issue on appeal and something for you all to consider, is whether an exception or, you know, modification to that front yard setback standard is, was correctly supported in the hearings official's decision. So, I think that also, the issue also relates to landscaping along that north edge, which was raised in some of the testimony as well.
So, it's difficult to see, and I'm looking for the landscape plan here, but it does show, their landscape plan shows that there was landscaping between the street and the buildings, and the right-of-way admittedly eats that area up. So, that's an appeal issue that the hearings official aired in assuming that there was landscaping there, not realizing that the right-of-way wipes that area out.
Commissioner Duncan?
When we have a property like this, I assume that by definition, the north property line becomes the front yard?
Yes.
Because of the street?
It's because of the street, not because it's the north line.
Well, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And the other ones are considered side and backyard?
Interior.
Interior.
Excuse me, interior.
Yeah. So, it's 10 feet from abutting the street and five feet interior.
All the way around.
The significance of the north line, though, that's why I interjected that, sorry to interrupt.
That's all right.
Is that's the solar setback line. So, that's another appeal issue, is the hearings official granted an exception to the solar setback, and the basis was that it's just going to shade right-of-way. And so, there is an exception provision in the code that is explained in the hearings official's decision about that being an insignificant benefit and warranting an exception.
And since you brought solar up, I'll just go ahead and ask. Solar access is from property to property, not from building to building? So, the buildings interior, the interior buildings don't have to have solar setback from themselves?
It's, the setback starts from the north property line to...
The adjoining property to the north.
Property to property.
Property to property. Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jaworski?
I seem to recall at the public hearing that the applicant's attorney said that there was going to be more landscaping added to the north side. Is that represented in this map here? Because he, there...
I don't see it on their updated site plan.
Well, on this one, because they, there was, in the, in the appeal, there was talk about the cedar trees, and that they had said that those were, but those are on adjacent property, and their attorney said that there was more landscaping that was going in between the cedar trees and the property.
I think that was their original vision, and then, we required right-of-way that eats up that area. So, that, how they would implement landscaping is unclear on the updated site plan.
I think the question that has come up, the way I understand it, and I think partly on appeal, is that that landscaping that screens the north buildings is now in a easement or right-of-way and could potentially go away, assuming the bike-ped path gets connected through. Is that correct?
Yeah. I think, I think it's also fair to say that, you know, it's a question the planning commission should address under the criterion about adequate screening, that in the absence of being able to rely on that landscaping that's within the right-of-way and, or for that matter, the row of cedar trees on adjoining property. Did the hearings official air in determining adequate screening would be provided on that line? And depending on your determination there, the commission should consider potentially modifying with more findings or conditions. It could result in site plan changes to deal with the setbacks and landscaping, but again, that's going to depend on where the commission goes with the question.
Commissioner Duncan?
Well, since we seem to be jumping around a little bit, I'll keep going. And I was a little confused in a variety of the exhibits that were presented. The first one was this vicinity map that shows the subject property, and the pink lines, I assume, are the tax lot lines.
Right.
It would appear from this aerial that most of the trees actually sit on the subject property. But in fact, it was presented several different times that the trees are actually on an adjoining property.
I knew I should have encompassed that survey.
So, we do have, we do have a potentially more accurate survey. Becky's looking for that.
My understanding is that they are on Tax Lot 200.
In which, which one in the record is that?
That is...
PH 71?
PH 71.
Okay.
That's correct, PH 71.
So, from landscaping standpoint, it's where the base of the tree sits is the point in which you, you suggest is the landscaping?
Well, I think the question sort of centers on whether or not those trees are under the applicant's control. In other words, could they ensure the preservation of those trees and therefore rely on them for meeting the standard of adequate screening? So, I think that's a fair question for the planning commission to address. And in a general sense, we look at critical root zones, which, you know, in a lot of cases, will extend across property lines. And so, you know, in this case, part of that critical root zone beyond the subject property, part of it beyond the property of the north. But ultimately, it comes back to the question of whether there's adequate screening along the north line.
And back to adequate screening, so, if, if a site plan was developed that showed screening on the subject's north property line, and then, the city came in and required that area to be dedicated, it would be the applicant's requirement to redesign that site plan to move that landscaping if the requirement is to dedicate that area?
Well, potentially. Depends on when the dedication would be required, whether it's part in conjunction with a land use application or through some other means that the right-of-way ends up being dedicated. But, I mean, in a very general sense, we as staff would be looking to, you know, to provide that screening or to address where conditions may change the site plan and to see what the sort of ripple effect might be. In this case, I think there are several appeal issues at play in terms of the setbacks and other things that could affect the ultimate, final site plan.
And is it typical in PUDs for us to require screening on the front property line?
Well, I mean, I think that's one of the things you need to grapple with. I mean, traditionally, we certainly see that question come up more so with adjoining properties, you know, immediately abutting. So, I think, you know, from a, from a appeal standpoint, that's a judgment issue you have to weigh.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question in that same vein. I thought that when streets are built or developed, you're supposed to have street trees as a minimum, let alone the screening components.
So, the PUD approval criteria talk about screening. So the PUD approval criteria talk about screening. So you'll want to look at that. There was not a condition for screening on the north line, but there was, I think, it was presented in their original plan that there would be landscaping. Then right-of-way was required and that area went away. So it's an unanswered question about how that element of the proposal is being implemented. And there wasn't a condition imposed to ensure it or address it.
And to Commissioner Jaworski's question, yes. Typically, street trees are a requirement of full public street improvement.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
And the street, but the street is, ends at the driveway.
Right. So in this case, the street trees would only be required within the right-of-way that-
In the red box.
Right. So it wouldn't extend across the full length of the subject property along the north line?
Because that's a right-of-way when it's built. That's what I don't understand.
The street, only the red box is a street.
Bike and pad accessway.
The blue is bike and pad, is the bike path.
But it's being, it's under my impression that that bike pad was being, that's not being widened enough to be a street, is what you're saying?
Bike pad connection will be, what, a 10 or 12-foot multi-use path, not a public street?
Oh, and that's why the sidewalks only went so far? Because after that point, that's where that turnaround goes into lot 200? Is that my understanding?
Well, there would be a transition. Again, talking about the future potential condition of a public street there.
Well, when one talks about the future, one has to plan for it now so it can be built in the tree's foot, is all I'm saying.
And I'm just clarifying that the street trees would only be required along the front edge of the public street, not along the length of the bike pad easement that was also required. It's a continuation from the end of the street toward the park, toward the river.
And are those typically required at the point of development or at the point the street's improved?
Point the street's improved.
So until the street was improved, street trees along that area would normally not be required?
Correct.
The condition for the irrevocable petition includes street trees for the street. That ends my presentation of the facts.
I have a question regarding the fire turnaround. And so I know we've been on landscaping, but, and I guess, I'll do that and then I think maybe a few more questions and then kind of parse this out in a way that I think we can start grappling with some of these issues. My question is, on the fire turnarounds, are those, I guess, and I'll ask this, I don't know if it's in the record and if you can answer it, but where the fire turnaround is on this property, is that a result of access to the property for fire for this property, which I know is common in a development of, let's say, multifamily project? Or is that a result of the length of Oakley Lane and fire trucks not being able to turn, turn around at the end of Oakley Lane? Is it a result of this specific development?
The findings for the right-of-way exaction about the cul-de-sac site, the cul-de-sac standards about if a street terminates and it's longer than 150 feet, it needs to have a turnaround. Oakley doesn't have a turnaround. So there was a condition to provide enough right-of-way for a future turnaround. And then there, a street, if it terminates as a turnaround, it's not supposed to be longer than 400 feet. And this one is, an exception was granted and then that's an appeal issue. Did that answer your question? I don't think it did.
I think in part, it's also safe to say that, that the fire department's requirements were triggered based on this application and this development. And so in order to meet their fire code requirements for access onto the site and around the proposed buildings, that that's, that's also a quote "safety" issue that's in play here.
Is it also safe to say that Oakley Lane, as it currently exists, is non-compliant with fire department regulations?
Does it meet the code standards for-
Code standards or the turnaround or any of that currently? Is that a fair assessment? Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, since the fire turnaround inside the site was just brought up, I believe in your presentation, you said that's temporary?
Well, it'll probably be permanent physically, but there was a condition for, because it's a feature on their site plan.
But isn't it required for the subdivision itself? I mean, how would they turn around? If this is only temporary, when you go all the, what, a fire truck has to back out all the way?
So there's a condition for a temporary ease, public easement that would go away, the easement would go away when the hammerhead is constructed in the future at the end of Oakley.
I understand that, but the, but the hammerhead at the end of Oakley is not the same as when they turn to go in and fight a fire at that end. Usually, there should be a required turnaround there.
They are different turnarounds. One is for the development, one is for the street.
The one for the development, you're saying, is only temporary. That's my question. When it goes away, how can it go away if there's no turnaround for that?
The paved physi-
The easement will go away, but it'll physically be there and it'll be private. It won't be a-
You're saying they can't remove it and make it open space?
Right.
Okay, that's different than temporary. Okay. So they can't remove that turnaround? It has to stay there?
In order to meet fire code requirements, the physical surface and the dimensions are necessary for it to be compliant.
Okay, good. That's what-
The easement goes away if the other one gets built. If they have another way to turn around, the easement goes away.
And then the access just becomes private rather than-
Private turnaround?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
It seems like the, the main issues here are, with the appeal issues and the assignments of error, relate to transportation and traffic, which I think are issues one through six and 10. And then with compatibility, which are assignments of error seven through nine. And I'm wondering if we might want to start, I'm thinking sub-assignment 10 kind of hits both of those. And if we maybe, excuse me, six. Six is the one that hits both of those.
Process question?
Yeah.
So, is this being videotaped?
Yes.
It is. So your, your idea of us not taking a vote and waiting until, a formal vote and waiting until next Monday to do so, I guess my question on that is, is that to bring Commissioner Mills into the decision-making process? Because if that's the case, I would feel comfortable with that if Commissioner Mills agrees to watch this video and, and brought up to speed, because otherwise, we're going to be rehashing and going over everything that we did here today. And I, I think that that could be problematic. You know, other, so if, if he's comfortable with doing that and not going back over, I mean, if he has questions, that's fine. But, you know, I mean, we're, we're an hour into this already. And to do that again on next Monday with the timeline would be problematic, I think.
Not to, not to take away from Commissioner Mills, but, but based on time constraints, I support that concept. But if we do take a straw vote and we see that there are no two-twos where his vote on Monday would make a difference, maybe we could take action and not have to be redundant on Monday.
And to, just to clarify, from staff's point of view, time is limited and we would like to get as much direction as we can from today's meeting. And I appreciate Commissioner Jaworski's comment there. If we can get some clear indications on particular appeal issues, we can begin helping to draft some findings that would address those. Of course, the ability is there, assuming Commissioner Mills participates on next Monday, to revisit some of those, but we'd certainly prefer not where the votes are clear. And so we can move as, as far toward a final order as we can today. That'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then let's, let's proceed that way then. Commissioner Duncan?
One of the things about the way the planning commission has worked in the past, I only bring this up, I'm happy with your suggestion, other than there are times when a planning commissioner brings forth an argument that actually will sway the decision of another planning commissioner. And so I guess what I'm suggesting is, if we kind of think, gee, there's maybe a three in one, one way or the other, but somebody's not real sure that maybe we could defer that one?
I understand.
Just in case. And if Commissioner Mills doesn't really have any issues with it, then we already have that three in one. But I would allow him, I'd like to allow him at least the opportunity to put his input into assignment of errors if he has something that's fairly strong.
I think that seems fair. And I think in, kind of conversely, if we're unanimous pretty strongly that-
Yep, I'm happy with that.
Something is one way or the other, then that should move forward. Okay. Staff, where do you think the most beneficial sub-assignment to start with would be?
Starting with six?
Well, we had suggested in the agenda item summary that that, that's, that appeal issue six seems like a logical place to start. I mean, of course, we could start elsewhere, but it seems to include arguments related to both of those kind of main areas of concern around traffic impacts on the one hand and compatibility on the other. And so at least in terms of getting some initial indication where the commission's at, we felt like that was a good place to start.
So let's start with appeal issue sub-assignment six. And that is that the decision aired by finding the application met the following approval criterion in EC 9.832013. The proposed development shall be reasonably compatible and harmonious with adjacent and nearby land uses. How do we feel? That assignment of error?
Well, excuse me. This issue actually talks on several things. Are you just talking about the transportation component? Because on the second part of it, it then gets into the modification of setbacks. So-
It would be both.
Again, there are two, I think two, and I'm, I'm generalizing here, but there are two key areas of concern that are raised here. One's related to traffic impacts and one's generally related to compatibility. Within that, there are several arguments related to each topic area. But perhaps, given the interest in the street issues, we should start with that. There's also a related appeal issue. I believe it's in the, the prior appeal issue around quote "minimal impacts." And so, I mean, I think it's something that the hearings official found and Lubas also addressed, this is perhaps one of the more subjective criteria in the PUD approval. And so again, it's, it seems like a good place to start with the commission's sense in terms of the impact from, from the traffic.
Okay. So sub-assignment six related to traffic. Do we feel the hearings official aired or? Or not?
I'll start it, what the heck? Somebody has to. In my readings and my feelings on, on the traffic is that, that the impacts of this development are within reason, in my view. I think that, that the way, the way streets get brought up to city standards throughout the city is a little bit different than here because we're, it's that Santa Clara, you know, unincorporated, incorporated area. So that throws a little bit of a monkey wrench into the thing. Normally, if, if you had an unimproved street and it would get improved, you would have a local improvement district. I, I think that the safety concerns that have been brought up by the, the appeal, in my reading of the Public Works document, I feel that, that it can be a safe street in the conditions it's in. And when it gets, if, if it ever does, does get brought up to, to city standards, that will be on the other property owners, just like in any other local improvement district throughout the city. I don't think there's an undue financial burden on the other people. It's the same as it is anywhere else in the city. You know, when they want to bring my street up to standards, I don't, don't think that the PUD necessitates the city, the street being brought up to city standards at this point. And so I'm, I'm feeling that I'm okay with the traffic. The other issues, some of the setbacks and stuff like that, I think we might want to put some conditions on, but-
I think let's, let's maybe focus on traffic first and then move to some of the others. I think I'll go ahead and jump in too. And I think I, I would concur with Commissioner Borowski. In my reading of it and looking at it, it appears that it is within that reasonable range of, of safety and access. I think the fact that the additional right-of-way is being requested, or at least the special setback for that, that's not uncommon in the way we do things around here. And that's a pretty common way to make sure and assure that in the future, if it does need to be improved to meet whatever needs there are at that time, then that, that right-of-way is already, and the irrevocable petition actually is in place. And so I think in that sense, I think it meets, meets the standards for, for what we'd want to see. So I would, I would concur with that. Commissioner Duncan?
Yeah, I also agree. When I, when I look at this project, it is within the allowed density of, of low-density residential, so they're not trying to exceed density. I, in reading the Public Works document, it seems that they, and actually more thorough than I think I've ever seen before on a, on a PUD project like this, really explained well their belief on this. I agree that the right, or the, the dedication of the right-of-way is standard business for us. I certainly hear the concerns of the neighbors and yet, we have to sort of follow the code and the information supplied. There was some testimony, the hearings officer had heard from Mr. Troutman, I guess it's pronounced, regarding the accident, but yet there was no accident reports in the record that I remember, correct me if I'm wrong, that showed that this was an unsafe intersection with Oakley and River Road. So I think that the, the information we've received really does support that this is a safe enough street to continue to operate correctly with this project in place.
I guess I have to speak. I would probably be in a minority here, and not that it affects the whole street. I feel that development that has impacts on a neighborhood should correct those developments and not look to a 20-year horizon that says maybe it'll be fixed then. I feel that when you have these formulas that say 100 triggers a TIA, well, 100 dumping onto a street that carries 3,000 is not significant, but a number close to 100 dumping on 64 could be. So I kind of feel that something is wrong with just having a flat formula that says this triggers a TIA. I think there should be more looked at, but that's irrelevant at this question. I think that to improve that whole street would be very difficult and I don't think it's, it would be hard from what I've read in the record to justify that. So I sort of agree with the other commissioners. However, I do disagree and feel that all of the street sidewalks, bike pad improvements that abut that property should be built by that developer now in front of him. And if he wants, he can get credits for his SDCs. he wants, he can get credits for his SDCs. So there are fees that allow that, and if they read that, that's eligible, and I think that that way, that part is done and widened, and it might facilitate the rest of the street being done quicker.
Commissioner Duncan?
I guess my comments weren't, weren't necessarily meant to disagree with development along the front of the property. Mine was really dealing with the traffic impact on Oakley. I would be happy to further discuss your second point.
Oh, I thought that's what everyone was saying, that the transportation, traffic impact issue-
I'll, I'll jump in here, and, and I want to just clarify, there are a number of appeal issues and criteria in play here, and so while Commissioner Jaworski's touched upon the TIA trigger of 100 peak-hour trips, there are other criteria that get at more subjective evaluation in terms of minimal off-site impact, compatibility, and so in discussing those, you need not necessarily limit yourself to the, to the threshold of a traffic impact analysis. And so even with what I've heard here, there may, there may still be some areas of concern or potentially conditions to, you know, to Commissioner Jaworski's point about potentially requiring improvement along the frontage. Those are, those are issues that are, are at play and, and should be evaluated as we move through the appeal issues. I do think there are some other more specific criteria that touch on, and standards that, that touch on those issues. And so, while we, you know, we've heard those initial concerns, I'm, I'm making a mental note here to try to get more specific when we get to, for example, the street standards.
This is really kind of the big picture-
Yeah.
-look at it as far as traffic and compatibility. And then as we get into some of the other sub-assignments, then we can fine-tune those based on those individual sub-assignments.
Okay, well then, with, with, with that, if I may, I'll, I'll expand all my comments since we're talking compatibility and, and harmonious. And looking at this particular project, I think it does have an impact besides that, that are related to just the road and street improvements. I, I feel that when you have that, the setbacks are insignificant, and I mentioned that earlier, and this has not been built yet, it's only drawings on a paper, that those buildings could easily be moved back several additional feet. I'm not as critical on the other setbacks because they're not abutting the adjacent property owner's buildings or houses as such. And so, they, the north side is having an impact on, on that neighborhood, so I would see that having them that close is not really compatible and harmonious with what that street front now exists at. So I can go into that.
Commissioner Borowski?
So, getting to something that Commissioner Jaworski said, I, I feel just the opposite of, of what you said. My, my feeling is one of the, one of the arguments of the neighbors was this has a country lane feel to it. If you, if, if that street never gets brought up to city standards, do you want to take away green space, open space, and put 25 feet of concrete at the end of that street? To me, that takes away from the country lane feeling if it never gets developed. If it does get developed, a local improvement district requires the property owner to pay the price to develop that. So to say, yes, we want them to, we want that property owner to pay for those improvements when they're done, why put them in there if, if it's never going to get used? If Lot 200, if, if tax Lot 200 at some point turns into parks and open spaces that the city decides they want to expand and maybe purchase that as parks and open space, do you want to have 45 feet of developed street at the end of there when it could be the-
Oh, it would be 45 right-of-way, it wouldn't be-
Well, what I'm saying is, I, I'm, I, I don't think it should be built. I mean, they're going to have to pay for it if it goes up to city standards. To have, to have that be a requirement of it, you know, in the meantime, you could have, in the, in the meantime, they could put landscaping in there, knowing that if the thing gets developed, they're going to have to pull that out, but it, it would provide some screening, and it would look better, in my view, to the, to the neighborhood and to the, to the, the subject PUD.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Borowski. I've seen examples where the city used to require this to go in, and all of a sudden you have a rural, nice kind of lane that all of a sudden has a sidewalk that runs- If that, and it looks very odd. I have a concern about requiring the PED improvements because I believe that in the Public Works document, it said that at this point, they have no funding to maintain, to build or maintain that area. Now, again, I guess the property owner could build it, but then who maintains it? So I guess I would resist that, other than I think that it was stated that, that the, the PED and bike area would be an improved gravel path. With regard to the setbacks along the north property line is a different issue for me.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'll jump in with my, my comments too. I think overall on compatibility, I think I would agree with the hearings official that generally the project is compatible, and I, I know there's disagreement about that, but I did some math and just looking at the, the bulk and mass of the buildings and the square footages and the number of, of buildings in relating that to the overall square footage is, it's not out of line with R1 density standards. Yes, it's more dense than what may be around it, but if, if it were single-family lots developed with, you know, 26, 2800 square-foot houses or something, or even a 3,000 or 4,000 square-foot house, it would still meet the R1 standards. And so I think from that standpoint, I think they've done, I think, a good job of overall arranging the, the property and the buildings and, and the project. I, I agree with Commissioner Duncan. I think when we get to some of the setbacks, I do have some concerns, and I do have some concerns related to screening, but, but I think overall, from a compatibility standpoint, I think it is. Gabe, were you going to respond to that, or?
Based on what I'm hearing, I'm thinking we, we probably should try to tackle the question of setbacks, and maybe go around in terms of the northwest, east, south, and just get a sense if we need to present additional possible conditions you might consider, you know, that'll give us some lead time to look at that.
Okay. Let me get Commissioner Jaworski's comment first.
Well, I, I can give what appears to be a minority comment now and then lead into setbacks. I, I can see that the building of that road is something that the commissioners don't want to support, but let me just say that I advocated for that because from what I heard in the public testimony and read, the neighbors wanted to have that street improved, not remain rural. I, I don't see how I could have got the interpretation that the fact that they're saying they want a TIA, they want the street wide, and they want safety, and say at the same time, they want it to be rural. I did not hear that, so, but maybe I misread it. In talking about setbacks, I think that that's a critical component for being harmonious with the neighborhood, and I'm just going to lead in and say, I, I, I think that there's enough flexibility, and I looked at the site, but I don't have the skills of some of us here, and those buildings could be slightly reoriented and have a setback of 10 foot in the front to allow for some screening now to maintain that rural look. But I think they could be reoriented and re-angled slightly to really address that issue. I don't think that a, a development should have open space and harmonious things inside the development, and that takes a priority over the abutting neighborhoods' harmonious open space and, and screening. So I think that that could have been condensed a little bit more and easily address the screening and/or setbacks issues on that north side.
I'm thinking maybe we should go ahead and, because we've done kind of the straw poll on six, and I'm thinking we should maybe jump into the setbacks. Trying to think of which assignments of errors best relate to that. Would that be seven?
There are actually several areas where I think it comes up, and let's take a minute to try to find a logical place to start there. Number seven was suggested.
It seemed like seven to me was maybe a good place to start.
Right, and this is, this is Criterion Three in the PUD, saying that the PUD will provide adequate screening from surrounding properties, including but not limited to anticipated locations, bulk and height. And so, while there are other areas where the more specific standards for front and side yard setback come up, and there's also the issue of the hearings official having granted an exception in some cases along the west, south, and north, this seems like a, a good place to start in the more subjective realm.
And I'll, I'll go ahead and jump in, and I think I'll just express my concerns. It sounds like the, the carports where they've set those back five feet on the west meets setbacks. I'm a little concerned about articulation on those because it's just a long, flat wall, and so that kind of goes beyond setbacks, but it does address the compatibility. On the south property line, I think, if I'm remembering right, the conditions were that they either provide the five-foot setback or get an easement or, or okay from the, from the neighbors. I would be okay with that. I don't think that's uncommon with what we have done in the past. I am concerned about the north. My, my gut feel is that Oakley will probably never get fully developed to that full 45 feet, but having the buildings that close to that special setback, if it ever did happen, is a little concerning to me, as well as having them that close to the bike-ped path without having any real good ability to provide screening there. I'd like to see more of a setback on that north property line. I'm not sure I'd be willing to require 10 feet. I would think five feet would be more, five feet would be adequate, but I'll just throw that out for my opinion. Other commissioners?
Five feet seems tight to a bike path for me. You know, I mean, if, I think that, that if the developer could live with a 10-foot setback, I would, I would rather see that. I don't think it would be a deal breaker for me. One foot, I don't think really cuts it, especially one foot from the bicycle. One, one foot from the, from, you know, the, maybe the five foot from the easement where it's the 25-foot right-of-way, maybe five foot from that and 10 foot from the bike one, would make it almost straight across there, just because I don't know if that'll ever get built, whereas I think that, I think that the bike path will get built, you know, will get built and used, whereas I don't know if the, the road will get built and used. So I'm more concerned about a buffer between the bicycle path and the, and the development less so of the, of the other.
Can I just clarify one thing? The red, the blue, and the pink is all right-of-way. It's not a special setback, and it's not an easement.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
But that's where the-
That's where we're expecting improvements. Yeah.
And, and that shows up on our site plan as the shaded area on the north.
Yeah, I was looking at this.
Okay. Commissioner Duncan?
A question, since we have a site plan here and we have an element called bike-long, short-term, which was originally in the proposed dedicated area, but then was moved out, could we require that to be moved? Would that be a condition, or could the developer just decide to move it to get it out of there if we put a, say, a 10-foot setback?
Could you clarify that? I'm not sure where your point is.
This little on the north line, it's called-
Between Building One and Two.
Yes, between Building One and Two. It actually, when it was moved before, it was, I understand, I think from-
Oh, so the bike parking?
Yeah.
Bike parking. Thank you.
That could be moved without any type of modification if we said we want a 10-foot setback. They could put it somewhere else, and that would be adequate, or would we have to-
I, I believe so. I mean, one thing the commission will need to consider in making any newer or modified conditions of approval, what the effect would be on the end result, and I don't think that-
What's not significant that changes the project?
I think it's safe to say that there would be adequate area for them to comply with bike parking on other parts of the site. Exactly where and how, I can't answer that on the fly, but, you know, the, the final PUD process, whether it's bike parking or setbacks or some of these other changes, that will provide an opportunity to consider what, you know, and the applicant will need to show what the effect of these changes is as part of that process.
Okay.
They'll still need to meet bike parking standards.
I think, Gabe, I'll, I'll jump in. I think what you're saying then is if we impose a condition perhaps of an additional setback or a greater setback at the north property line, that it's really the applicant's responsibility to figure out how to achieve that.
Yes, although, just thinking ahead a little bit, I would advise that, you know, we could add some language that at least, I think it's a heads-up to the applicant that they'll need to relocate bike parking in compliance with, you know, applicable standards. We can, can craft some language in, in there to make sure that that gets looked at closely in the final PUD.
Okay. Well, they're going to need to do that as well as, I think, probably end up doing more than just sliding the buildings, looking at where they're at. I think you're going to have to rearrange a few things, so, okay. Sorry, Commissioner Duncan.
I think it would, I think it would help staff if you could be precise when possible to say which building and how much of a setback, so that we could visualize maybe some potential conflicts as things shift around.
So, I have a question. So on the, on the-
Okay.
I just want to know what the lighter shades on the outside of the building are, or on the edges. So there's the yellow, and then there's the lighter, is that?
It says private house porches down on the-
Oh, okay, those are porches, okay.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yeah. It, it would appear by other information in the record that these units are, are going to front on what appears to be the sidewalks, say, between Buildings One, Three, Two, and Four, which means that the back of the buildings face the ultimate right-of-way. I would probably feel a little different if the fronts of those buildings faces the streets, but if this is the plan and it would be just moving, I think I would support at least a 10-foot setback requirement. Again, I think it's just important that from the, from the back of a, of a, of a house, that there needs to be some setback from the public right-of-way in the public use area.
Will confirm building orientation toward the street, whether it's the back or the front?
So while Becky's looking at that, I just add, what I'm hearing is at least enough information, we could come back with a, a potential condition of approval for you to consider around requiring, you know, the 10-foot setback along the north property line. In other words, from the area that's to be dedicated as right-of-way. So we, we can come back with language and some options around that.
And then-
I'm, I'm more comfortable with five feet, that I could support 10.
Okay.
Are you still?
Well, yeah, I was going to talk about the rest setbacks, but if you want to talk about just the north property line setback.
No, go, go ahead, and then I've got Commissioner Jaworski.
Uh-huh. I just died.
I guess you're done talking.
I guess. The, the rest of the setbacks, I'm okay with. If anything, I read that they're all at least five feet, other than Building Six, where it appears that there is a porch or a patio or something. I think that those are, I believe those are two-story townhouse units by the lettering. I see enough of those things along a fence line or whatever else that I'd be okay with that. I don't, I don't have a problem with the setbacks the way they are on the other property lines.
Commissioner Jaworski, then Commissioner Borowski.
Just for the, I would favor the 10-foot setbacks, and I did have a question since Commissioner, on the north side. I did have a question that, because Commissioner Duncan did bring it up, on the orientation of the buildings. Just a clarification, I always thought that when structures abutted a street, that you had to have a front entrance facing the street. Is that not correct?
That's a multifamily development standards, but here is the proposal for the buildings fronting Oakley. I see a porch and a door, general orientation to the, to the street.
So that's only a multifamily standard?
That's correct.
So if you- So if you... But these are not multifamily, although they're cluster attached.
The proposal is showing that the doors are oriented toward the street.
Okay.
So the entrance to the buildings one and two, the main entrance is on the north?
That's my understanding of the drawings provided by the...
Doesn't seem to match the site plan.
No, because then they would need a sidewalk all the way up to the other buildings.
And if there's particular concern about that, we'd need to take a closer look at how the multifamily standards were addressed, whether a modification to that orientation standard is properly granted. I can't say off the top of my head, so, I mean, we can look into that.
I'm personally more comfortable with the orientation that shows on the site plan.
Okay.
Well, I was going to... I had Commissioner Borowski in the queue.
I was going to say, this doesn't show me the orientation.
Frankly, I don't know that it was specifically raised as an appeal issue, but in a general sense, in terms of compatibility and orientation, it seemed like fair discussion.
So I would like to just make a little bit of a modification on Commissioner Duncan's 10-foot setback, just by looking at the plans and where things would squeeze in. I would propose five foot on the section that is... Has a 22 and a half foot right-of-way, and then 10 foot on the ones that have the 13 foot right-of-way. So that if you look at this, where it's at now, if you were to push in 10 feet from there, from the gray shaded area, it's going to be tough.
This isn't correct, though.
That's the 22 and a half, right.
That's not correct, though, is it?
That one should be correct.
I thought it stopped at the east side of the driveway.
So basically, what I'm saying is where the red is, go five foot. Where the blue is, go 10 foot.
If I reach this right, this actually stops here.
I'm looking at the north side.
This is based on what he's saying.
This right-of-way stops on the east side of the driveway.
No, does it?
Yeah, it goes to building one. All of building one.
It looks to me like it goes all of building one.
I don't think that's right based on record.
Is the gray shaded area on this the right-of-way?
See, it's only 50 feet.
The gray shaded area does not exactly match that, so I don't know that this 100% implements the dimensions.
There may be inconsistencies on the site plans, but what I think the effect of the condition could be is to require a five-foot setback along the area of right-of-way dedicated for the street.
Right.
And that 10-foot setback be required along the area dedicated for the bike ped right-of-way.
That's what I'm hearing anyway.
And what the condition would do is make sure that the final site plans reflect accurately that end condition. So there may be... There are iterations of the site plan that wouldn't necessarily reflect that in the record because we're making conditions that would be implemented time of final PUD.
If we could live for the right-of-way, that's fine. Okay. I can look at it.
Okay. Any other comments on setbacks? I think Commissioner Borowski, you were going to talk about the other setbacks, or did we cover that already?
I'm all right. The only concern I had was there on building six, and I can live with it if the other property owner can.
If I might jump in. So were there any other concerns among the commissioners about setbacks or the way that the hearings official addressed that requirement with the option of either maintenance access easement or five-foot setback along with the west, south, west and south property lines? I just want to get clarity on that before we move on.
For me, I'm comfortable with that.
The only thing that, I mean, it was on the west wall, they said that it was going to be a green wall. I would want to make sure that that wasn't, you know, I mean, it was represented that the developer was going to make it a green wall with the esfoliator trees. I would like that to be part of it. I don't want just a wall there. I would like it to be a green wall and five feet back in.
I would concur with that.
Okay. If there's a majority of interest, we can come back with some language that would modify and clarify that that's an explicit requirement if they go with the option of the wall along the line and that they get the easement.
No, even without the easement.
Without the easement. Okay. In any case.
I think that gets it what my concern was with even at a five-foot setback, it's one very long, flat wall.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And I know, well, I think the multi... Do the multifamily standards apply here?
No.
No, they don't. Okay. Then I was thinking the articulation of walls.
Oh.
Okay. Commissioner Jaworski?
I assumed when... That we were finished with the north side. Is that correct?
Unless you have some additional issues to raise.
Yeah, I just wanted to let it be known so that when Commissioner Mills reads this, that I don't necessarily support the five and 10. I'd prefer a 10. The reason that is the five where you're proposing it is the only section that has three existing homes that would be facing it. And they're not, you know, they're not within five feet. So the issue, so, you know, when it comes to a vote, I probably won't support five and 10 for that reason. Had there not been houses across from that five, I might look at it differently. And the final thing for harmonious is that when you want to have things that are compatible with the neighborhood, just a comment, and that's why I asked about orientation, all these homes are facing the street. I don't know how harmonious and compatible you are when you say, here's my back on your house. So I think that's an issue for me.
Okay.
Go ahead, Gabe.
I was just going to add, it seems like we may be at a point where we can talk about landscaping in terms of screening along the north property line and how we might address that as well.
I think that's a good segue. Commissioner Duncan?
Well, I think just for... To make sure that I think we're all understanding Commissioner Borowski's suggestion on setback is the five-foot setback only goes to the east side of the driveway, not as depicted in this diagram going further over. It only goes to the east side of the driveway.
East side of the required 22 and a half foot special setback.
Right.
Whether or not that's accurate on their site plan or not.
A question I have with regard to the west property line requirement, when the original idea for the green wall was, I believe, to screen the carport garage area from the adjoining property, and they were requesting an exemption for an eight-foot wall versus the allowable undercode six-foot fence, correct?
They proposed an eight-foot wall...
Concrete wall.
Concrete wall as mitigation to lesser setbacks for the structure and also for the adjacent surface parking, which is supposed to be set back seven feet and have landscaping and be paved, and they're proposing gravel. So they talk about the wall minimizing dust and sound and odor and having multi-purposes.
So my clarity then to the commissioners is, are you suggesting that that eight-foot concrete green wall still be constructed along the west property line, five feet from the garage carports?
Five feet from the property line or five feet from the garage?
You can put a fence right on the property line, as long as it's on your property.
I envision the wall being the back of the garage.
I think Commissioner Borowski's correct. At least that's the way staff understands it, is that the wall is essentially, would serve as the fence, if you will, or the barrier between the parking and the property line. So if they're moving it back, that will be the back wall of the parking. I don't know that they've... I don't believe they've proposed any other fencing in the event that that wall gets moved back to five feet from the property line. Their issue, as they've expressed it early on, their concern was with the maintenance of that area, so it was presumed, at least on our part, that it would be, if anything, just landscaped setback area, not like a fence between the property line and the wall of the garages.
What I recall from the original requirements, where they would either need to obtain a maintenance easement from the neighbor or set it back five feet, and it appears they've elected to set it back five feet. But I think what, if I'm understanding Commissioner Borowski's thoughts, as I think are the same as mine, that because it is such a long, flat wall, I think I'm okay with that if it is truly a green wall, but not if it's just a wall, whether it's concrete or otherwise.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear to make sure that we recognize that that wall was also moving.
Yes.
That it wasn't end up being two separate walls.
That was my understanding. Yeah, that was my understanding. Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, and if staff could clarify, at the bottom garage, hard to read, I think it's 41, that area below that is open parking?
Yes, and the concrete wall is proposed to extend, continue south of that.
So the concrete wall would go past the garage and then across that gray area?
Yeah. Matt maybe shows it better, but it's showing...
As I understand it, the wall would cover at least a portion of the south property line there where the access and parking's located. That was something the hearings official addressed as far as granting the setback exemption. So his condition captures that piece of the wall as well.
Oh, it's going to turn the corner.
Yeah.
So why would it have to be... I can see where the garages are, but why would it have to be eight feet where their parking is? Just an eight-foot wall, you know, makes me... I thought all were being torn down in this last century.
A green wall.
A green wall. With live vegetation or just painted green?
No, live, live trees. They grow out like this. I've got them at my house, pear trees. They're great.
That's a good distinction. You could call something a green wall and just paint it green.
Okay.
As presented in the documents.
You might want to look at the landscape plan in the record. That, I think, is the best depiction of the boundaries of the wall. It basically shows that heavy line of the wall.
Okay.
The entire west boundary and a portion of the southern boundary, abutting the vehicle use area.
Only because I like neighborhoods and I don't know what the abutting property is going to be, would it be too much to say maybe from the last garage or from the first garage, that maybe they allow a little access path there for some day, that they might want to get to know the neighbors or whatever is built to the left? Because I know in our neighborhood, we're having problems with all the walls that were built, and now no one can get to another area.
As I understand it, the record shows that those properties are developed with single-family dwellings. I'm not sure if they all are. They're under separate ownership. In order to make a requirement like that, we'd need to, I think, zero in on a particular criterion that would require it and determine how the hearings official aired in not providing it. I'm not sure that that's raised in any of the appeal issues, so...
Well, then it's a comment to the developer to make his development better.
Okay, so that, are we okay on setbacks then and giving you good direction?
Yeah, that's good feedback, and we appreciate it. The detail will help us to craft some potential conditions that you might consider adding.
So what next would be the best one to tackle?
Well, I think before we move off of it, and not to focus too much on the north property line, but there was some concern about the physical screening of that, not just the setbacks, but the provision of landscaping, where they had shown landscaping within what would be dedicated right-of-way. And so how does the commission want to address that in terms of either potentially requiring additional landscaping or perhaps even considering alternatives that would allow it in the interim within the right-of-way or, you know, anyway.
Commissioner Borowski?
Well, I think that with the direction that we gave to increase the setbacks to between five and 10 feet, use that additional setback for screening-type landscaping. Also allow for landscaping in the right-of-way, you know, knowing that at some point it will go away, but not relying totally on that, but allowing them to do that would be something that I would look to see happen.
Commissioner Duncan, sorry.
No, that's fine. I live in an area where we used to have bike paths that have fences on both sides, and it's always a little ominous to try to ride through with a bike when you've got stuff many feet high. I guess I'm a little concerned about screening along the north property line if it truly is a ped and bike area, if that vegetation is allowed to get too high. It's also the, in reality, the front of the property. If the commission wanted to go with some type of screening, I guess I would be concerned about the height of that screening and what it turns into, as Mother Nature makes things grow. I'm going to gather that this site, given the... Given all the time it's going into, it's going to have attractive plantings on it. So I guess I would not necessarily be for any major screening along that. It's real possible that those trees, given Eugene, are going to stay a long time.
So to further that suggestion, and just for the benefit of the group here, I think it would be advisable if you're looking at conditioning landscaping, that you could rely on code provisions for L1, L2, L3. I'm hearing from Commissioner Duncan that you may prefer the L2, the low-screen standard. But anyway, it provides us a relatively clear and objective method to make sure that they meet the condition of approval and that it gets installed correctly and it achieves the intended result.
Right. In general, I would be not in favor of some type of screening, but if the choice was, I would prefer an L2 screening.
And I'll jump in. I would agree with that. I think at one point on one of the plans that I don't have in front of me, I think the applicant was proposing 30-inch-high landscaping along that north property line. And I think I would, regardless, I guess I would support 30-inch screening, not tall screening, because I think if you get that tall screening, a couple of things happen. One is it creates that tunnel on the bike path and I think creates a perception of being less safe. And I know when I've ridden bike paths where there are walls on both sides, it just feels weird. And so I think having that a little more open is better and I think still gives adequate screening. So I would support a lower landscape buffer there.
This one says minimum 30 inches high within three years in their landscape plan.
I would tend to support maybe maximum.
Okay, so what the L2 standard requires, just for clarity here, low shrubs to form a continuous screen at least 30 inches high within three years and maintain a height not to exceed 42 inches.
Perfect.
And then additionally, one canopy tree for every 30 linear feet as measured along the street line. So, and then there's coverage of 70% within that area, within that bed. So there is a canopy tree requirement of one every 30 feet.
Does that refer to right-of-way or to street?
This is typically applied on private property as a, for example, as a parking area buffer. But so this standard is normally implemented on private property, and again, that's part of the key here is whether the commission wants to allow some of this interim landscaping in the right-of-way. You know, it may also, I mean, if that's the case, you may want to consider crafting some language around a condition that in the event it's removed, that it be provided on the adjoining private property.
And I think too, I'll jump in, and I've got Commissioner Jaworski and then Commissioner Borowski in the queue. I think the L2 is fine in my thought. The canopy trees, if those cedars end up staying, I think the canopy trees would be redundant.
I don't think they move.
Well, yeah, and I'm concerned that, you know, putting in a 12-foot bike path in that location, if those trees are located properly there on this plan... path in that location, if those trees are located properly there on this plan, they, they may go away.
Okay, and, and another consideration that, that just, that came to mind for me is the typical seven-foot width. And so depending on the setback area, they may not be able to accomplish that standard. You can, I mean, in making condition under some of these more subjective criteria around adequate screening, I think you have some flexibility. Could say, for example, L2 standard except for, or, you know, and tweak that a little bit to fit the site conditions here. We could, we can work on some language around that.
Okay. Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, relative to screening on the eastern half of the site where those cedars are, that provides some screening whether or not they'll always stay there, but they will. When I take a look at the central to western side of the site, I have a problem with 30 inches. If you look at the driveway and then that little corner to the left, that's right in front of where they have all that open parking. I don't know if 30 inches, when it eventually gets there, is going to be blocking all these cars. I think it might have to be a little bit higher. And I would think that the first one or two units in building, one might require, I would like to see something higher than 30 inches, if not one or, one or two trees. And I don't know when the trees you were referring to, Gabe, would actually go in from the city. They may not go in for, for years there.
You mean the street trees?
Yes.
Well, right, so it would be dependent on the timing of future street improvements. We can't.
And the reason I'm citing trees there is because the area that I've just identified is, is immediately abutting two houses facing that, and I don't know if I'd like to live there and look at the back of the building for the rest of my life. So I just kind of feel it would be making, making it more harmonious and compatible with that if in that little corner there, we did put some height to break up those buildings and a little taller to break up where that parking area is, so I'm not looking at cars.
Commissioner Borowski?
Well, looking at the landscape plan that the developer provided, it basically is hitting on everything that was said by commissioners. It's calling for continuous landscape of minimum 32, so that's the L2, along the cedars. It's calling for landscape similar to the standards in L1-2 with trees selected from the city on the thing from the cedars to the front. And in the section where Commissioner Jaworski was talking about, it's L1. So L1, can you tell us what the standards for L1 are? Plan three. So, I mean, it looks like everything that we're looking at is already in this plan.
And this is part of the approved?
I think the, the key difference is that L1 does not require a minimum height of 30 inches and max of 42. That it also requires one tree every 30 linear feet, the canopy tree requirement, requires six shrubs every 30 feet. So it's a lesser standard, and so it's not as.
L2 has the, the shrubs and the tree.
Right. And frankly, it's, it's a standard that's typically used, again, for parking area buffering with the intent of shielding headlights, so.
Okay. So they're close. I think if we just adapted that to what you heard around the table here.
Well, we can look back at that in terms of bringing back some language to try to capture the discussion here.
Thank you. There's sheet L2. Commissioner Jaworski?
It's almost 1:30, and add some levity, close only counts in horseshoes. So I, I kind of feel that, you know, I like to be a little more specific than what that says in that area, so I'll come back to that again when you modify that, because, you know, every linear 30 feet means you could miss the whole area that I'm talking about by going, you know, 30 feet. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Well? Have we, have we hit the major?
Tell us.
Well, I think, you know, in concluding on number six, it'd be helpful to hear that if the commission agrees, the hearings official, whether, you know, your determination, whether he aired or not. I'm hearing that there's some interest in modifying his decision, but that he didn't necessarily err in such a way that you wouldn't find compliance with the approval criterion under number 13. But so, just want to kind of wrap that up and see if it's logical to move to another item.
Okay. I don't get the sense, in my opinion, that he aired. I think we can fine-tune it better, but again, I didn't see anything that I thought was any kind of fatal flaw originally. Commissioner Duncan?
Agreed.
Borowski?
Yeah, I think if we can get those setbacks hammered out, I can deliver.
We're talking about seven, appeal issue seven, about screening, right?
Screening is the second part of that.
We're kind of summarizing, I think, what we've discussed so far.
I think, I think that what I heard was interest in affirming with regard to six and seven, but there are some additional findings and potential conditions you'll want to address before you make a final determination.
And then we'll need to revisit all of the subassignments of error, but within the context of what we've discussed here.
And not to be presumptuous, but in, in that context, you know, staff's interest is in trying to get some direction, sort of preparing a draft final order, if there's interest from the commission for next Monday. I'm wondering if we should only address items six and seven in the appeal before we proceed, or, or should we attempt to provide something more definite in regards to the overall list of appeal issues?
I think from my perspective, and I'll jump in first, that the way we've addressed the overall or overarching comments on transportation and on compatibility related to setback and setbacks in screening, I think it, it works its way out into the other subassignments of error, at least from my perspective. And I'm seeing a nod from Commissioner Duncan, Commissioner Jaworski, and Borowski.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't feel in the record there's enough evidence to say, if, if one was to bring it to a head, that the, that the applicant should be denied. So in that vein, I say that the hearing official did not err in approving the PUD, but I do have a lot of concerns with the conditions.
Commissioner Duncan?
And I guess I, to answer Gabe and Steve's request, I would support staff going ahead and, and working on some findings for the entire, given that we really only have two hours left to deliberate, and we got through two of 10 today, although two plus, I guess, unless we anticipate having a meeting between now and next Monday to work on this.
And I'm comfortable with.
Which, gee, we haven't had enough of those, so.
Well, and I, and I'm, I'm comfortable with directing staff to do that, too. I think, just to reiterate, though, I think a lot of the other subassignments of error kind of hinge on the discussion that we've had today. And so it's not like we haven't, not like we've only covered two issues. We've covered two of the major overarching issues.
Right. And at least thematically, from staff's perspective, we'd be attempting to capture the broader discussion around traffic impacts and compatibility issues and sort of translate that. It's not to say that, we're not trying to put words in your mouth on the specific technical issues or the arguments, but at least to give you a basis to, to really dig in and get to a final determination next Monday.
I think an important thing that we might want to get clarity on, we've been talking about the site and around the site, but there's a, a big issue about the rest of Oakley, and I think some of you wanted clarification from Ann about what we can require in terms of off-site dedications and improvements. Is that, did I miss that conversation?
That would be number 10, you think, that constitutional.
Well, I'd like to have that general conversation. I do enough work with those that I know you can, so.
Yeah.
But I think it would be a good education.
And for me, I mean, I could put number nine to bed today. That's the solar access. It seemed to me in my reading that the solar access is from the north line and it falls on the, on the proper, or on the easement. So in my view, I don't have any problem with upholding number nine if staff wants to.
And again, sort of revisiting what we heard in a general sense about Oakley Lane and, and your questions, we're going to assume for a minute, or for purposes of a draft final order, that he did not err with regard to the street standards. I mean, we haven't heard a major concern about that, you know, stemming from your, your traffic impact discussion, but that'll, there'll be a placeholder there under several appeal issues to revisit the question of exactions. I mean, looking at the time for today's meeting, I'm not sure, unless you wanted to extend time, whether we should get into that.
Can do it.
Legal discussion now as far as exactions.
Well, what I could do also is for next Monday, I could do a little brief summary of.
Ahead of time.
Ahead of time, in general, and then kind of how it applies to the assignments that you wanted.
The more ahead of time, the better.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, just one more, if prior to next meeting, there might be a clarification. In, in reading this and looking at the reference in one and indirectly in others to the two metro plan policies that were so cited in the appeal, that the hearings official, I guess, said were not applicable. I'd like some clarification on that, because I always was under the impression that if an area plan was not specific, the metro plan would then rule in that. So I wanted to really know why that was sort of put aside in, in, in the rulings.
I can address that also in my memo, I actually started outlining an answer to that.
Commissioner Borowski?
And this would just be a suggestion and a question for the other commissioners as far as next Monday's deliberations, if it's, I mean, I can, I can set aside extra time in case, you know, maybe try and, try and schedule your day if you can to go to 2:00, I don't know. Just because we need to, we're, we're really tight, and I would hate to have, you know, something come up and Commissioner Mills bring some poignant arguments to the thing and just see what everybody else's schedule is, and try not to schedule past 1:30 if you don't have something already scheduled.
Commissioner Duncan?
I could do that. We've done it before where we've started 11 and scheduled till 2. If we think we needed 3, that would work for me. It'd be easier for me to go no further than 2:00 that day.
Yeah, I mean, that.
And I could come at 11, my morning's open.
I could come at 11 to 2.
I could, too.
I think I could. I don't have my calendar in front of me.
Right. But just, I just would ra, would rather try and address it now than on the spot before we schedule other meetings.
Maybe we could check with Commissioner Mills and see if 11 to 2 would work for him. I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Matter of fact, I'll do it right now.
Okay. I think we made significant progress. All right? Well, with, given the time and are there, oh, yes.
I just have one very short announcement. At one time, we did have, at the city council tonight, action scheduled on single-family code amendments. That's been postponed for any of you who hadn't gotten that message yet.
Because of weather?
No, for more time to consider the testimony that came in, so.
Which issues?
Single-family code amendments. So.
The stormwater one that's going in front of them tonight, is that?
That's still going.
Yeah, and is that something that the planning, that this commission weighed in on before it was my, before I, way before me?
Yes.
Because I was reading it today, and I was like, gosh, that looks like a lot of the stuff that comes before this body, but I hadn't seen it. So that was months and months ago that you went through that.
It was, I believe Peggy Kepler did send you an update memo about some changes they have made subsequent to this commission's review.
It wasn't going to be something we revisit.
No.
Yeah, okay.
It's getting, going for adoption, basically. It's the public hearing for adoption.
The other items from staff? Items from commission? Yes.
I need you to buy me one of those really cool briefcases with wheels. Too much stuff. And also, if we could work on whatever the downloads were going on, I struggled with those four days in a row.
Yeah, the MSG files were a little tricky.
I could only open one at a time, and they would lock up if I got three of them. I get a black, I actually show you what happens. You get a black screen that shows up, and I finally figured out how to, if I told it to exit out of that, then it would tell me to stop the script download, and then I could actually, I found I could save the document without ever seeing what I was saving, and then I could finally open it. I've never had that much trouble with it.
Staff's apologies, we'll try to make sure that doesn't happen again.
Okay. We're adjourned.